I'd like to order the Weaver City Council Meeting of September 13, 2010. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight what I'm going to do is ask Andrew and Rob from Tube 514 to please lead us in that pledge.
(inaudible) United States of America, and here Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you to Andrew and Rob from Tube 514 in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. They're here to get some badges tonight, some credit for their badges. So, welcome, Tube 514. Would the city clerk please take role?
Wanda Sang.
Here.
Joe Demott.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Present.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
And Karen Adams.
Here.
And councilmembers Joyce J. and Karen Berry are both absent this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 9, 2010, and August 23, 2010?
Sure moved.
Any changes to the minutes? Please poll the council.
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
Seconded by Councilmember Sang.
Motion carries, six to zero.
Thank you. We have one proclamation tonight. I was going to ask Mrs. Wheatridge to please step forward to read the proclamation, and Karen Ruiz from our Adult Aging Center. Karen, feel free to say a few words tonight. Heather, can you turn the mic on for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Wheatridge, good evening. Whereas Active Aging Week is an annual health promotion event for older adults, their families, and friends, and allows citizens ages 50 and older to experience activities and exercise in a safe, friendly, and fun atmosphere. And whereas Wheatridge citizens ages 50 and older comprise 37 percent of the Wheatridge population, and it is in the best interest of each individual and of the city to help all adults ages 50 and older stay as healthy and independent as long as possible. And whereas the city of Wheatridge has committed to providing quality services to adults ages 50 and older, including health and leisure services, and active aging events throughout the month of September at the Wheatridge Active Adult Center, including the 30th anniversary celebration on September 20th, the Senior Health Day Check Day on September 24th, and free introductory days to many fitness, wellness, and dance programs. And whereas the name change from Wheatridge Senior Community Center to Wheatridge Active Adult Center reflects the national trend and local experience of focusing on active aging. And whereas Active Aging Week supports the city's citizens ages 50 and older, which is our fastest-growing population segment, and activities are hosted at the Wheatridge Active Adult Center for improving the health and well-being of the city's citizens ages 50 and older. Now be it resolved that the city of Wheatridge proclaims the last week of September as Active Aging Week, and we encourage all citizens to recognize the value of active aging for older adults and participate in the week's events.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. We are located at 35th and Marshall, and on Monday it will be our 30th anniversary. It opened in 1980 in September, and so we're really proud to be celebrating 30 years and celebrating our name change. And then on the 24th, we are having our Senior Health Check Day, which is something that I encourage a lot of the older adults in the community to go to, because we have lots of really unique and great screenings that we will be providing. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a presentation tonight from the Census Bureau. Please step forward and give us your name, and welcome. I'll come down and meet you.
Just a second. Larry Mugler, I'm a partnership representative with the Census Bureau, and we're out on our thank you tour for communities that really helped us out with the census, and just a couple of comments about that. It was really important to us to have the support of communities like Wheatridge in this effort. The census is a national effort, but it takes place one house at a time, and the help you provided in reaching out to folks, providing space for us to have health centers at your recreation center for folks that had questions about their questionnaire. Your commitment to the public to help them achieve the good count is significant. It's helped us save a lot of money. In Wheatridge, this time around, 77 percent of the folks mailed their questionnaire back without us ever having to go visit their house, which was up from 73 percent in 2000. And with improvements like that, the Census Bureau was able to return $1.6 billion to the federal treasury that we had budgeted and didn't need to spend. There's a map in your packet that shows the response rates by Census Track within Wheatridge, so you can see which areas did best. And the results of the census now will be very important, because it'll affect your representation in Congress and in the state legislature, and we estimate that it affects about $400 billion worth of federal spending each year in the way they're allocated. There's a sheet in your packet that indicates the amount per capita here in Colorado that is based on census results. Just some quick notes of what we're doing now. We finished going door-to-door on July the 10th. There still may be some folks that will see a census worker at their door. They're doing quality control to make sure we got everybody. We're checking to make sure that the vacant houses were really vacant back in April. About December 31st, we'll report to the president on the count by state, and then about February of next year, we'll get the numbers out for redistricting to the Secretary of State. And about that time, your city clerk should get a copy of that as well. You can start looking if your districts are based on population, you can look at changes in your precincts. There are other census products out. We just released this summer our 2009 population estimates. There's a copy of that in your folder. We estimated that there were 30-something, turn the page here, 31,030 people in Wheatridge on July 1st, which was a drop of about 1,800 since 2000, primarily due to changes in household size. And then this fall, we're releasing data from our American Community Survey, which is the old long-form questions. So, data like income or housing characteristics will be coming out this fall. I put in your packet, a release from last year's American Community Survey, that shows where people in Wheatridge, who live in Wheatridge, where they work. And I think it shows a real significant number of folks that live and work in Wheatridge, which is great, I think, for your community. We're available to do some data training, especially for communities like yours that helped us with your staff, if you'd like us to do that. Other than that, I want to thank you again for the help you provided, both here at City Hall and through your recreation center. Thank you, and let me give you the plaque.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sure.
And I've got a letter and a certificate for the rec. center as well. I'll leave with Heather.
Thank you. The city of Wheatridge wanted to thank the Census Bureau for working with the city of Wheatridge at our locations, and I wanted to thank staff for working with the Census Bureau on their 10 years. So, I'll pass this on to Patrick and Joyce Manwaring.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak, and under citizens' right to speak tonight, we have public input on the 2011 budget. So, what we'll do is before we have general public comment, is there anybody here to speak on the budget tonight, the 2011 budget? If you are, please step forward and spell your last name for the record and give us your address under city. Is there anybody here for the budget, 2011? Seeing none, we'll move on to...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I was waiting to see if anybody was here. I did have one submitted to me of somebody that can't get here, happens to be my mother. She asked me to read something into the record.
Can you spell the last name for the record, please?
You sure? That would be Nancy Snow, S-N-O-W. I just mixed it up with another one. Ah, so you covered it with the plaque. Okay. Because I am unable to come to the city council meeting tonight to speak on next year's budget, I ask that the following comments be entered into the record. One, regardless of the results of the November election on the issue of changing the current form of city government, I would like to express my opinion that this city does not need a city manager and/or administrator making over $125,000 a year, and an assistant city manager/administrator also making about the same amount of salary. This is a small city, which has changed only slightly in size since its incorporation, and one professional city manager or administrator, whatever the title, is sufficient. Two, please refrain from any more expenditures for consultants. The amount spent for consultants in the past two years is excessive. And that's the completion of those comments.
Thank you. So, now we'll move on to citizens' comment on anything not on the agenda. Do we have anybody here for public comment on any item not on the agenda tonight? So, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. We have to add item number five. Councilmember Sang, I think we need a resolution number two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add agenda item number five for a city-initiated rezoning of properties located at the southeast corner of 44th Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard to Mixed Use Commercial. You want to give a resolution number?
Yes, this will be assigned, or resolution number 55, yes.
Is there a second to add resolution 55 to item number five?
Second.
We have a motion to add item number five, which is resolution 55, seconded by Councilmember Demott. Please poll the council.
Motion carries, six to zero.
Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? So, the agenda will stand as amended. Item one is the consent agenda. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Consent Agenda 1A, a Resolution 51-2010, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2010 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $2,760 for the replacement of the Digiplay server for WRTV 8. 1B, Resolution 54-2010, amending the fiscal year 2010 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for additional contract building inspections related to damage from the July 20, 2009 storm to Building Code Services International in the amount of $30,600. And 1C, a motion approving payment to Murray Dahl Kutschenmeister &amp; Rinald LLP for legal service fees incurred in August 2010 in the amount of $17,193.93. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve 1A, B, and C.
Is there a second? We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries, six to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Council Bill 16-2010, I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 16-2010, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 concerning the creation of a mixed-use zone district, case number ZOA 0907. Several of the city's adopted plans, including Envision Wheatridge, call for the redevelopment of key commercial corridors with high-quality mixed-use development. The current zone code makes attaining this goal difficult. Existing zone districts either prohibit or greatly restrict mixed land uses on the same site, leaving a planned development zone as the only option for most potential mixed-use developments. The proposed ordinance creates new mixed-use zone districts that encourage mixed-use development, and do not require the applicant to complete the PD process, which can be timely and unpredictable. The new mixed-use zones districts, boy, that's a mouthful, I tell you, are designed to allow a wide range of land uses, encourage quality design, and enable higher density developed for targeted commercial corridors, as well as the future transit-oriented development at Ward Road Commuter Rail Station. Sites with the new mixed-use zoning will be subject to an administrative review process that removes uncertainty and lengthy timeline that is associated with the PDs. The proposed ordinance is intended to bolster the city's economic development goals by, now this is a word that's going to grab you, incentivizing redevelopment along important commercial corridors. It promotes mixed-use pedestrian-friendly development that will create quality designations and enhance the image of Wheatridge.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 16-2010 will be assigned ordinance number 1471.
Thank you. We'll move on to the staff presentation. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record in your position with the city.
Thank you, Mayor. Ken Johnstone, J-O-H-N-S-T-O-N-E, Community Development Director. We are pleased to be here this evening to give you a brief presentation on the mixed-use zoning ordinance. We've been working on this for about nine months, and it's been a high priority for city council for longer than that, so we're glad to be before you this evening. I'm going to talk briefly about the background and some of the process for how we got to this draft that's before you. And then Sarah Scholwalter, who's a planner in the office, and was really the project manager and really the work behind everything before you tonight, is going to go through some of the code content, and not try and cover the whole code, but hit a few of the highlights, because there were some pretty significant policy issues that were discussed and resolved through the process. So, background, we've been doing a lot of planning in the last few years. This is really about implementing those plans. We have started in 2005 with the adoption of the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, which strongly encouraged that the city look at revitalizing its commercial corridors, looking at new development patterns. Another big recommendation from the NRS, as you're, I'm sure, well aware, is that the city really needed to overhaul how it manages change, and one of the ways that we do that is looking at how our zoning processes work or don't work, how they encourage people to invest in the community, or whether they potentially discourage it, because the processes might be too onerous. More recently, we've adopted the Envision Wheatridge Comprehensive Plan that really solidifies the city's vision for redevelopment along our commercial corridors in more of a mixed-use pedestrian-friendly, slightly higher-density fashion. Along the way, in between those two processes, we also adopted two subarea plans, one along the Wadsworth corridor, generally between 35th and 44th, that again, were repetitive, but encourages mixed-use at higher, moderate to higher-density development. And then lastly, the Northwest Subarea TOD, which is our future commuter rail station along the Gold Line that's part of the FastTrax program. That, too, is an area where we're trying to encourage moderate-density mixed-use development. So, the plans are in place, and this is really the next step. The existing code, it's not particularly interesting, particularly easy to do mixed-use development, as Councilman Stites mentioned in his summary. Planned development is really the only tool that's realistic. You can do a planned mixed-use development. The challenge with that is it's really an unpredictable process, it's a timely process, it can be an expensive process. At the end of the day, you know, when we're trying to encourage people to reinvest in the community, that's probably not the best process that we think it is to have out there. As we went into this process, we had a few different goals that we wanted to achieve as we developed these new zoning districts. We wanted to create what we call straight or by right zone districts. In other words, once a property is rezoned, the rules are understood. It's not a negotiated process, which is really what a planned development, rezoning is. We knew we wanted to streamline the development review process, and those are really related issues, but what we've created in these new mixed-use districts, and we'll talk a little bit more about this later, is generally speaking, an administrative approval process. So, once properties are rezoned, the approval process to actually get development built is an administrative approval process. We did want to be flexible. We didn't want to mandate mixed use or mandate certain uses. We wanted to make sure this worked in the market, and we'll talk a little bit about that more later as well. We've created a form-based code, which means that the design standards are really embedded right in the code, so it's not just a zoning district where you know what the permitted uses are, but it's also a zoning district where you really lay out all the design standards. And again, there's some flexibility there, but it's really a one-stop shop. It's the only place someone needs to go when they need to understand what the rules are, if you will. And then lastly, and we heard this, I think, loud and clear from some of our public outreach events, we really wanted to incentivize redevelopment rather than dictate what the development had to be. And part of that is what we're initiating tonight for 44th and Wadsworth, which is the city actually initiating rezonings. In terms of the process, we started, we kicked it off, actually, in January with, the mayor hosted what was called the Wadsworth Summit. That was really an opportunity to go out to commercial property owners along these corridors and ask for their input, both are you interested in pursuing this, and if you are, what do you think, what are your ideas on some of the major policy issues that are now in the code? So, that was a very informative process, and those were well-attended, and we were pleased with that. Secondly, we had a technical task force, and there's actually two members of that task force that are in the audience tonight, and I think will speak, but it was an eight-member group. It had developers, it had commercial brokers, it had designers, really what we call the end-users of this document, of the mixed-use districts. And we took their valuable time, and we really thanked them for that, on three occasions where we had several-hour meetings where we really got their input on the draft regulations. As I mentioned earlier, we wanted this to be a code that's based in reality, that kind of strikes a balance between working in the marketplace, but also pushing the market in a way to a little bit of a different development pattern, and we think that group was very helpful and successful in helping us achieve that balance. In terms of broader public outreach, we did have a dedicated website that was funded by a grant from Livwell Wheatridge, and that was a great tool as well. I think we had over 400 people visit that website, and there were opportunities to respond to surveys, to comment on different, whether you liked or disliked, different visual images of future development that might occur. We did have one citywide open house back in May, I believe it was, that was attended by 30 to 40 people, and really got some great input from that. I think we had a lot of visuals for people to respond to. One of the themes that emerged from that meeting was that there was a clear desire, and this is good reason for this, to have good transitions from higher-density development to residential development. We were able to amend the code after that meeting to reflect that. And then, very importantly, we, of course, have been updating city council along the way, but really have to thank our planning commission again, who really took on this role of reviewing these drafts with a lot of thoroughness and providing a lot of good input as well, and you really see that reflected in the draft that's before you tonight. And with that, I will turn it over to Sarah to talk a little bit more about some of the specific code issues.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Scholwalter, Planner 2 in the Community Development Department, and as comes out, I'll provide a brief overview of some of the major points that are in the ordinance before you tonight. You'll note that really the content hasn't changed since our last study session in June. We have two primary zone districts as part of this new code. One is called Mixed Use Commercial, and it's really intended for higher-intensity areas. We're imagining it for our major arterials like Wadsworth or Kipling. It allows for a wider range of land uses and for higher-intensity development by allowing for taller buildings. We do have a couple of geographic areas in the city that we wanted to allow for that higher-intensity development, but that have some unique characteristics. So, we have what we're calling sub-districts for those two areas. One is the MUC Transit Oriented Development, or TOD, sub-district for the future commuter rail station at Ward Road. And the second is the MUC Interstate, which we really created based on some feedback we got from our outreach to property owners on Kipling, looking at the area around the Kipling and I-70 interchange. But we've written the code so that it would apply to any major commercial corridor that's within 500 feet of I-70. And the second major district is Mixed Use Neighborhood, or MUN. This is for lower-intensity development. There's a little more architectural standards to ensure pedestrian-oriented development, and more of a Main Street-type feel. It is for a lower scale of development, and that this district is intended for areas that have not been exempted from the city charter height and density limits, and that would be for neighborhood corridors like a 38th Avenue. Building height for those areas that were exempted from the city charter height and density restrictions was an important topic that we spent a lot of time calibrating, both with our task forces and also from a lot of feedback we got. We had surveys on our website that people were able to look at images of different buildings and vote on what they thought was appropriate for different areas of the city. And we also did a lot of surveying at our meetings with property owners and the open house in May to ask people for input on building height. Overall, the approach in the MUC area is to allow for taller buildings, especially near the highway and at the future transit-oriented development. One of the things we worked on in this code was finding ways to build incentives for mixed-use development. As Ken mentioned, we didn't want to mandate it, but we'd like to encourage it. So, one of those incentives is to have a two-story height bonus if you do provide mixed-use development. Recognizing that we're allowing some building heights that are significantly taller than were allowed under the city charter, we will build in a requirement for any building that's 75 feet or taller to have a chance to step back to help with light, which in the street are not preventing, not creating mixed-use type of stuff. And also, based on some feedback we've heard from property owners that are concerned about transition to residential areas, there is a four-story maximum for any portion of a building that's within 100 feet of a low-density residential use. And this table just summarizes what maximums are. Generally, you're looking at four to six stories in a space MUC, and then near the highway or at the TOD, going from six to eight stories. And again, the MUN district for MUC Neighborhood would meet the city charter height restrictions. Another important topic is how to deal with transitions to existing residential areas that would be next to development under the MUC code. Parking lot or a drive-through use with a bus in existing residential zone block, a landscape buffer in combination with a solid fence or wall is required, so that there's some screening there. We also require for buildings that are going to be located next to a lot that has a single or two-family residential use, there's a landscape buffer requirement, starting at 10 feet, and then basically getting wired by five feet per story, so you get up to a maximum of a 20-foot landscape buffer for four stories and higher. And then we also have step backs at the upper level, so that in addition to that landscape buffer at the ground level, if you have a building that's two stories or higher, it's stepping back if it gets taller. And again, the four-story height limit that I mentioned earlier, for any portion of a building that's within 100 feet of a residential lot, it's also zoned residentially. Another important issue that we dealt with is auto-oriented. In a neighborhood input process for those sites, before you can submit a concept plan, you would have to hold a neighborhood meeting and invite anyone within a 600-foot radius. And then, after the concept plan has been submitted, there'd be a public comment period for 15 days, which would involve a mailing to property owners within a 300-foot radius, as well as a posting on-site. And really, the purpose of that is to notify people that the plans are available at the Community Development Department for review, and to provide the opportunity for property owners to come in, take a look at the plans, and give specific feedback or comments if they have concerns. And finally, another big issue that we were, had to resolve in writing the code was how to treat non-conforming uses. This is really more of an issue, knowing that there's the potential for some legislative rezoning in a few properties that could have uses today that might become non-conforming. We heard loud and clear from property owners that they wanted the ability to keep their successful businesses, and we completely agree. So, in addition to being allowed to remain in use and change ownership, you would also be able to expand by up to 25%. We did a lot of research into what other municipalities allow and haven't been able to find any other jurisdiction that's that flexible in their approach to non-conforming uses for structures. So, if the use is conforming, but the structure's not, you can expand as much as you want, as long as the nonconformity is not made any worse. And we also are proposing with this ordinance two changes to how we treat non-conforming properties in our code today. So, this would apply citywide to any zone district. The first is to add a provision, making it clear that if you're non-conforming and you are destroyed involuntarily, that you have the right to rebuild. That's currently not stated in the code. And the second is, we right now have a provision that if you're non-conforming use and you discontinue for 60 consecutive days, that you lose your right to continue that use. And we've heard feedback that that's a pretty short time, especially in this economy, if you're trying to find a tenant to fill a space. So, we're proposing to extend that time period to 12 consecutive months. And also, part of the ordinance tonight is some, really just cleanup amendments to the existing ordinance, so that it's compatible with the proposed new mixed-use zoning. And that includes some updates to the Development Review section to clarify the development review process for mixed-use zoning, making it clear that if you rezone to a mixed-use district, you do not have to go through a plan development process, updating our sign code so that it references the mixed-use districts and not just commercial districts, and also clarifying that planned building groups will not be required for a mixed-use district, which essentially means that you can have, on a large site, you can have several primary buildings and wouldn't have to go through this PBG process. And looking forward, assuming that the ordinance is adopted tonight, city staff is looking to next steps to start thinking about where we can apply the new zoning on the ground. As Ken mentioned earlier, the first step we're looking at is a city-initiated rezoning for the urban renewal site at the southeast corner of 44th and Wads. And then, moving forward, within the next couple of months, we'd like to go back to the property owners on the Wadsworth corridor that we met with in January, and now hopefully that the code will be on the books, talk to them about moving forward with an actual rezoning for that corridor. And that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you. So, move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number two? Please step forward and display your last name for the record, and your city, and all your address.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Bill Mahar, M-A-H-A-R, and I'm a staff member with Livwell Wheat Ridge. Pleased to be here tonight. I'm here with Molly Hanson, Livwell Wheat Ridge Coordinator, and Dana Oehm, a member of our Active Community Environment Task Force. Livwell Wheat Ridge is here to commend you, the council, tonight, in your vision to initiate this mixed-zone process, and asking you to also approve the mixed-use zoning ordinance. We've participated in the planning process at community meetings and have funded the mixed-use zone website, which has allowed city staff to provide information to the public on the benefits of mixed use, and also posts many documents associated with this draft ordinance. Additionally, we've received many positive comments from the community about the possibility of development along 38th Avenue and other mixed-use areas throughout the community. We really believe this is the right time to foster development in Wheat Ridge that will create a walkable, attractive, and healthy, and better quality of life for citizens of Wheat Ridge. Thank you for this opportunity tonight.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dana Oehm, O-E-H-M, and I am here tonight to speak in favor of the mixed-use zoning district proposal you have before you. I am currently a parent of children at Prospect Valley Elementary and Wheat Ridge High School. So, although I reside in Lakewood, predominance of my time and investment is spent in Wheat Ridge, and that is why I'm here tonight, along with the fact that I also sit on the Active Communities Task Force for the City of Wheat Ridge, and am on the Wellness Committee for Prospect Valley. So, my goals as a parent and as a member of this larger community are to provide opportunities for people. And what I heard you say initially during the presentation is that Wheat Ridge is trying to manage change. They're trying to encourage investment in the economic landscape, and I think what the AC Community Task Force is trying to do is encourage investment in the individual. So, I think these two goals work in tandem. Land use policy either encourages or discourages physical activity, and more and more science is emerging that would support mixed-use zoning as a method to get people out and moving in their community through safer sidewalks, bike paths, and public transportation. I see this affecting 38th Avenue in a very positive way, becoming a more vibrant local community filled with residents, filled with businesses, and filled with pedestrians. So, that's what I hope to see out of it as an individual, but also as a member of the AC Community Task Force. It's also something that other communities throughout Colorado are doing and finding success. I mean, from Longmont to Lakewood, mixed-use zoning has revitalized areas that were once neglected and maybe underutilized. And I think Wheat Ridge has the advantage of having a small area, being able to concentrate their efforts on specific goals, and I think this mixed-use planning will be one of those things that positively affects this community going forward. So, although it's going to take some time and some years, as it was said in 2005, you started this process, and it will be a long road ahead, I do think that this is one of the steps we have to take in order to see the changes that you want to see, both physically and visually in your community. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please play your last name for the record.
Denise Waddell, W-A-D-D-E-L-L. I had the pleasure of serving on the Mixed Use Zoning Code Task Force that was put together by the city staff, and in that capacity, I wore two hats, one as property owner on Wadsworth, as well as a lender for, a real estate lender in both commercial and residential properties. I was very impressed with the level of effort that the city staff put forth in gathering together a group of professionals to provide input into the zoning code. These professionals, which included architects, builders, real estate developers, and commercial brokers, work with zoning codes throughout the metro area, and they fully understand what is workable and what is not workable in these codes. By listening to the concerns and adopting many of the recommendations of the task force, I believe that the code presented is a much better process with appropriate flexibility and predictability. To be competitive with our neighbors, it is important to create predictability and decrease the time necessary for the entitlement process. Additionally, I am here as the Board President of Wheat Ridge 2020, and our Board of Directors fully supports this proposed mixed-use zoning code. It was fully vetted by our planning committee, and they made the recommendation to the Board of Directors to support this. The mixed-use zoning will replace a decades-old standard and put into place a land use and urban design framework reflective of current real estate practices and the redevelopment visions for our commercial corridors. And I also have a letter from the board that I'd like to enter onto record.
Good evening. Bruce McLennan, M-C-L-E-N-N-A-N. I'm a principal with SEM Architects, and we are in Denver. I also was invited to serve on the task force. It's quite an interesting exercise. It's not often that we get an opportunity to be consulted this early in the process in any given jurisdiction, let alone on many projects even as it comes to light. And, you know, I have to congratulate staff. I have to congratulate the city. This was an effort that was truly consultation. There was a lot of back and forth, a lot of discussion, a lot of what-ifs, a lot of giving it the burn test. Do these things work? Don't they work? I can tell you from the design side of things, we are a very pragmatic, market-based practice. We were part of the process of trying to figure out the kinds of things that would and wouldn't work and the different examples that we looked at. That was probably one of the strengths of this whole process, is because it gave everybody an opportunity to kind of step back and say, "What if?" And based on that, there were a lot of very good ideas that were fleshed out, and I think were incorporated in this I think that this code does incent development, and it incents mixed-use kinds of development without necessarily stifling creativity. So, often what we see jurisdiction to jurisdiction is there's more carrot, or there's more stick than there is carrot in these discussions. And this really isn't set up that way. This is set up to offer more opportunities for incentives, and with good design and with good decisions, I think the projects can be very strong that come out of this. The other thing that I think is good from our side is that I think it allows, and we believe it allows, market forces to truly dictate some of the decisions that are going to be made on these projects, rather than necessarily just looking at ordinance-type decisions as being the dictator. And I think that's a very strong thing, especially from my clients on the development side of things. I think one of the other things, too, that was touched on earlier, is that this addresses existing uses with pretty reasonable consistency. And that's another thing that we don't always see from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. It can be very, very difficult for some of the existing patrons and clientele to figure out how they fit into these new kinds of codifications and ordinances. So, we do support adoption of the code. We think it's going to be good for Wheat Ridge, and we just believe this will be a good thing.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak on item number two?
If not, I have another letter submitted.
Okay.
This one from Nancy Snow. I'm sorry. Because I am unable to attend tonight's council meeting and the hearing on adoption of regulations for the mixed-use zone districts, I would like the following comments to be entered into the record. As you all know, I was adamantly opposed to the removal of height and density limits from the charter. For that reason, you may well think that my opinion is an isolated one, since the majority of voters did approve the change. However, I have talked to many people, both before and since the election, and I have not heard anyone express any opinion that they wanted or envisioned buildings as high as 122 feet. In fact, it was common for people advocating the change to reassure prospective voters that no one was proposing buildings as high as 100 feet, that what was needed and desired was just a few more stories to be competitive. Once again, it seems that hired consultants have come up with a proposal for buildings far higher than anyone but the developers want. I would encourage someone on the council to scale back several stories from the current written-proposed ordinance.
Thank you. So, moving on to council questions and discussion. Do we have any discussion or comments from council? Well, in that case, I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's with great pleasure, and on behalf of the citizens of Wheat Ridge, I move to approve Council Bill 162010, case number ZO80907, and ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws concerning the creation of a mixed-use zone districts on second reading and that it'd take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second? There's a second by councilmember Sang, Reinhardt, and Adams. They're all grabbing for their mics. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Did we get all our votes? There we go. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Resolution, item three is Resolution 52-2010. Councilmember Reinhardt?
Yes. I'd like to introduce Resolution 52-2010, opposing Proposition 102 and Amendment 1661, and asking the voters to educate themselves on the devastating impact that these measures will have on the ability of their government agencies to perform essential services and Colorado voters will see three statewide ballot issues in November, on the November 2010 ballot, Proposition 101, Amendment 60 and 61, which will independently and collectively slash municipal tax and fee revenue, impose restraints that will make financing public facilities and infrastructure difficult and expensive. Proposition 101 reduces specific ownership tax paid on vehicle registration to $2 for new vehicles and $1 per year after that. The proper, the loss of property tax is estimated $500 million statewide for municipalities and other taxing districts. Reduces vehicle registration fee to a flat $10. This ends one of the principal funding sources for the highway users' tax, and will reduce the municipal share of the H-U-T-F by some $45 million. Street maintenance dollars to cities and towns will decrease by 38%. It eliminates sales tax on the first $10,000 of a vehicle's value. Municipal sales tax averages about 3.5%. This will significantly reduce the sales tax revenues for cities and towns. Eliminates sales taxes on telecommunications services. This is another significant reduction in sales tax revenue and the primary, the primary source of revenue for some municipalities. And it cuts the state income tax by 25%, a loss of $1 billion from the state budget. For the record, this, our staff predicts that this will be a 3.1 or roughly 10% reduction in our revenues to our general fund. Amendment 6 cancels voter authorization property tax override, taber authorize voters to allow revenue generated above the taber limits to be retained and expended by municipalities. Most cities and towns have voter-approved or temporary overrides. Future taber overrides will be limited to a four-year period. If the future taber overrides are approved, it can never be in effect for less than four years. Enterprise funds, which must pay property taxes, municipal services, water and sewer, and electric utilities, and recreations will have to pay taxes as opposed to acting like a municipality, and will enforce increases in utility bills and program fees. It imposes a 10-year limit on a property tax increase approved by voters, and this would eliminate the ability of municipalities to ask voters to approve the type of long-term bonds and use finance for such projects as water treatment plants, and will cut school district mill levies and state, required state-back district mill levies and requires state backfill. This is the same state that will be forced to cut the school district budgets by more than $300 million this year. Amendment 61 lowers the limits on municipal borrowing. Future limit would be set at 10 percent of real property assessed values. Requires voter approval of any public debt, including lease purchase and leaseback financing. Requires a tax decrease to match debt payments upon completion of debt repayment. This will require tax reduction, even if the debt was repaid by project revenues and not tax dollars, and no state government debt, period. What you have now for large state facilities is what you get. And this amendment would generally make it impossible to finance long-term improvements like, as often is done with our public infrastructure and our public buildings. Our staff has recommended the approval of the resolution based on the severe impact that the three statewide ballot measures will have, and whether adopt independently or collectively on the Wheat Ridge's ability to provide essential services and programs for Wheat Ridge. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 52-2010, a resolution opposing Proposition 101 and Amendments 60 and 61, and asking voters to educate themselves on the devastating impact that these measures will have on the ability of their government agencies to provide those essential services and program they depend on on a daily basis.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, second by council member Langworthy. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries five to one, with council member Demott voting no.
Thank you. Item four requires a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing for item four, which is Resolution 53-2010. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you. Resolution Number 53-2010, a resolution authorizing assignment to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority of a private activity bond allocation of the City of Wheat Ridge pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Ceiling Allocation Act.
Patrick, do you have any comments on this during the public hearing for Resolution 53-2010?
I could just read a little bit of the background, if that's all right with council. The City of Wheat Ridge has received an allocation of $1,424,250 for the purpose of issuing private activity bonds in 2010 under the state ceiling imposed by the Tax Reform Act of 1987. Staff recommends assigning the city's allocation to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, CHAPA, for the purposes of providing affordable for-sale housing in the City of Wheat Ridge. CHAPA has an extensive history of partnering with cities and counties to support local projects by leveraging volume cap. Partnering with CHAPA is a beneficial option for Wheat Ridge to ensure that its volume cap is used in a timely manner, since any unused cap is relinquished back to the statewide balance and administered by DOLA, Department of Local Affairs, meaning it is not likely to be used in Wheat Ridge as the original allocation would be. Private activity bonds are tax-exempt bonds designated to offer low-cost financing to the private sector borrowers, and our allocation to CHAPA would be specifically used for, to provide single-family mortgage loans to first-time homebuyers in Wheat Ridge. And we've provided this, CHAPA has provided this service in the past, and I believe I have some stats, thought I had some stats on exactly how much, how many loans were made throughout the city, but I don't have those in front of me. But it is a very successful program. Most communities in the metro area do assign their allocations to either CHAPA or the Metro Mayor's Caucus in the previous years for this type of program.
Thank you. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number four tonight from the public? Seeing none, do we have any council questions or discussion before I close the public hearing? Close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve the assignment of allocation between the Colorado Housing Finance Authority and the City of Wheat Ridge, and to adopt Resolution Number 53-2010, authorizing assignment to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority of a private activity bond allocation of the City of Wheat Ridge pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Ceiling Allocation Act in the amount of $1,424,250, thereby designating the city's PAB allocation of CHAPA, to CHAPA for the purpose of providing single-family mortgage loans to low and moderate-income persons and families.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, second by council member Stites. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to zero.
Item five is Resolution 55, a resolution beginning a city-initiated rezoning of properties located at the southeast corner of 44th Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard to mixed-use commercial. Councilmember Sang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 55, a resolution beginning a city-initiated rezoning of properties located at the southeast corner of 44th Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard to mixed-use commercial. Should I read this?
I would suggest that you read the whereas, since this is a very important.
Whereas, the Wadsworth Corridor Subarea Plan was adopted in 2007, and the envisioned Wheat Ridge comprehensive plans was adopted in 2009. And whereas, both plans recommend that Wadsworth Corridor redevelopment over time with higher-density mixed-use development pattern. And whereas, the existing zoning designations along the corridor are generally commercial, including a predominance of Commercial 1/C1, which allows only limited residential development. And whereas, properties located at the southeast corner of 44th and Wadsworth are included in those plans and are recommended for future mixed-use development, including the development of town-center land use patterns that promotes a more active and pedestrian-friendly environment. And whereas, renewal Wheat Ridge has acquired three properties in this location totaling nine acres and is working with a master developer on redevelopment plans that would include mixed-use development, anticipated to include office, retail, and residential. And whereas, rezoning the property to mixed-use commercial MUC would support the development concept being proposed and would expedite ability of renewal Wheat Ridge to redevelop all or part of the area into the land-use pattern and urban form that the city desires. And whereas, Section 26, 613 of the Code's laws requires city council to begin the process of city-initiated rezoning by adopting a resolution, doing so, and referring the matter to the Planning Commission for Public Hearing, which would be preceded by a neighborhood meeting. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, as follows. The city council hereby initiates a rezoning of property located at the southeast corner of 44th and Wadsworth, as generally depicted on the attached Exhibit A. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 55.
Is there a second? We have a motion for approval, second by councilmember Reinhardt. For the record, Ken, did you want to state what Exhibit A refers to in the packet? Just for the record, Exhibit A, the map of?
Exhibit A is an aerial map that depicts the areas that we would like to move forward with. It includes the three properties that the city, the city's Urban Ruins acquired, so the former grocery store, Pad, the Stagestop Antique Mall that's at Urban Renewal owns, the former service station, transmission shop at the corner of 44th and Uppam, and then also the First Bank property, which is a part of this redevelopment, and the Panda King property that fronts on 44th.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval, was second by councilmember Reinhardt. Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for this evening. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two quick items. First, I would like to announce and congratulate staff on two new awards the city has received, both from the three CMA Savvy Awards. These may be familiar to you, we've received a couple in the past. We received first place for both awards, which is the Savvy Award. The first one is for our Hold Up Robbery Prevention Program on Channel 8, and the police department obviously was involved in this production, along with Heather and our videographer, Jesse Johnson, who is in the back behind you. The judge's comments on this video were that it was engaging, it holds your attention, very informative. This is a well-produced program with good shooting, editing, and on-camera talent. It's no wonder that Hold Up is successful. So congratulations to the staff who worked on that one. Also, we received first place, or the Savvy Award, on the Business Education Series Training, or BEST. This is an economic development program that Ryan Stachowski, previous employee, worked on. The judge's comments for this was, "A creative and cost-effective program. BEST was every panel's members' top pick. It leverages existing resources, eliminates duplicative services, saves dollars, and clearly has a measurable impact." We're impressed with the collaboration across agencies, key in these difficult economic times, and noted that the cost to the city itself was minimal, almost nonexistent. Well done. So thank you to Heather, first of all, for coordinating those programs, and to Jesse, who's sitting behind you. Thanks, Jesse. I'd also like to announce that the city is partnering with Lutheran, Exemplary Lutheran Medical Center and the Drug Enforcement Administration, the DEA, for a take-back, prescription take-back day. This is the first national, first event of the national program. It will be held on September 25th, and this will enable residents to drop off unused or unneeded prescription drugs for disposal at Exemplary Lutheran on September 25th between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. Citizens may anonymously dispose of any solid medication with or without original prescription container, and any liquid medication still in its original bottle. And if you have any questions about this program, you may contact the police department at the City of Wheat Ridge, and we will have this information on our Channel 8 and our website. That's all I have.
Thank you. City Clerks Matters?
I just wanted to just make a quick comment, because there's been a lot of requests at the city clerk's office for information about ballot questions that are coming forth, particularly those that are on, that are specific to the City of Wheat Ridge. And the questions are often about the matters of how they'll get the information for and against those type of things. A lot of voters are, it's hard to understand what comes out on what's known as the Blue Book and the beige book, so I just wanted to clarify, so everybody understood what that meant. The Blue Book, which everybody typically receives, actually is produced by the state, and that provides for and against comments and summaries of ballot initiatives, but only on state-related and state, things of the state jurisdiction. So you won't find anything in that book on Wheat Ridge specific. You will find plenty of good information on all the other statewide ballot initiatives. However, the other one is the beige book. That is produced by Jefferson County, and however, that is only produced for taber-related, as in taxes, fees, and that sort of thing, financially-based ballot initiatives. Otherwise, again, you won't find information in those, in that beige book unless it's tax-related. With that in mind, it's a little bit trickier for voters to get the information you may be needing, to be informed on the three ballot initiatives that are on the Wheat Ridge ballot. But I can encourage you to look to the newspapers. You can also contact the city clerk's office, and we'll gladly provide you the information you'd like. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Langworthy?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Demott?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I believe this coming weekend is Farmers 5000, is it not, up at the high school? And it's Sunday?
Sunday, starting at 9:00.
Good, so I encourage everyone to participate in that, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sang?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to give my personal gratitude and recognition to a former employee, Krista Jones, who was with the city clerk's office for about 32 years. And I know she worked with me for 21 years, and I'd just like to let her know that she was very much appreciated and will be sorely missed.
Thank you. Councilmember Reinhardt?
I guess, I just want to know that I did sign up to run in the Farmers 500,000 or half, if I can get that far, so I'm doing my bet there. On a more serious note, I do think it's important that we did pass another annual, passing the 9/11, the ninth anniversary this time, and I just think that's worth noting, again, the loss of lives and what an important impact that's had on the whole nation, our community over the last decade, and I think it's worth remembering it.
Thank you. Councilmember Stites?
Oh, yeah. If you haven't had a chance, go buy the new Discovery Park at 38th and Kipling, it is really taking shape. But sometime this weekend, I think it was Friday, maybe Saturday, Friday, they put the artwork up, and it really looks good. So once they get done paving 38th in a couple of days, and, you know, take a drive out there and see that, because it's really going to be quite an addition to Wheat Ridge, that whole park. This is an excellent time to relocate your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, please ask one of us or staff. Please try to do a positive thing for either your family, your neighbors. We're getting down towards the end, so we won't have to preach on weeds anymore, but take a look at them, and if your neighbor needs help, help them out. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. I did want to reiterate what councilmember Adams mentioned. The Farmers 5000 is Sunday, starts at 9:00. You should be there probably around 8:00, if you're going to early register. You can also register online. It's, 32nd Avenue will be closed from Wadsworth to Kipling that day, and I will not be running. I will be emceeing with the principals, so I'll be waving at my family and Mr. Reinhardt as they run by sweating and huffing and puffing, so we'll be emceeing. I wanted to also reiterate what councilmember Stites mentioned. The public art, the mayor's public art, was installed on Friday. We're not going to actually have a ribbon-cutting or a grand opening, or whatever you want to call it until actually the park is closer with Phase 1 and Phase 2 being completed. But that sculpture is very large, it's 17 feet plus the base, but when you see it in the park, it looks very small, but it actually is really pretty impressive when you get close to it, so it really looks nice. And it puts Wheat Ridge on the map, especially in that part of town. And that's our second, I guess that was there, that's our second public art that's outside. We have the statue at the rec center, so it's really great to see something come to fruition. And then the third thing I wanted to mention is, you know, we had the Building Code Task Force, which went really well, and I was talking to Mayor Free up in Arvada, and they're doing the same type of process, they're going, looking at their building codes. But one of the things that they're doing that we didn't finish, and that was fine, is that they're looking at the International Property Maintenance Codes, which did cause some heartburn in the City of Wheat Ridge with some of the property owners. So talking to some of their task force members and the mayor, I would recommend that the City of Wheat Ridge maybe hold off on doing anything with the International Property Maintenance Code until we see what Arvada does, because they may do a lot of the work for us. And they're going to look at the common, the common problems with that code, and that would take care of our side if we actually got some of their code afterwards and take, see what we could use. Their goal is to make it more streamlined and more user-friendly for their businesses and property owners, so we could actually look at some of what they've done after they're completed and maybe use some of that. So I don't know if council really wanted to have our Building Code Task Force rev up again until after theirs was done, or council can take a look at the ordinance that Arvada passes later. It's just the International Property Maintenance Code, that's the part that really was put aside, and we're not really inspecting our multifamily properties. Just to give you a heads up, Ken, you know, if you're interested, they started that process a couple of weeks ago on their International Property Maintenance Codes. So with that, we are adjourned.